Next item is Department Item 1. Would you please, would the clerk please read the item into the record?
Chair Hart and members of the board, Departmental Item Number 1 is from the County Executive Office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Dr. Don Rinoso. I know you're getting settled over there. Just take a minute. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the incredibly long hours that you are putting in helping us.
Thank you. And my, what I tell staff is that this is our jam, and I'm going to stick with that. So, thank you for your support. I'm here to give you an update about our work and the state of affairs, but want to remind everyone that our response objectives is, number one, to flatten the curve, reduce the spread of infection and deaths; two, reduce overload to the healthcare system; three, to protect healthcare workers and frontline responders; four, protect other essential personnel; five, assist the most vulnerable individuals affected; six, assist with economic mitigation and recovery; and seven, inform the public with accurate and timely information. The situation status as of yesterday, in Santa Barbara County, we have reported 88 cases, total tests, and the testing lags because we are still processing the lab results from both commercial labs and private labs. So, in our county, 600 and, 761 total tests have been completed with 128 pending. Forty-nine of our 88 cases have recovered, recovering at home. And to give perspective, in California, as of the 29th, there are 5,763 cases with 135 deaths. And in the U.S., that number would be roughly 140,904 cases with 2,405 deaths. And these numbers are reported as of yesterday. Case progression in our county versus California and the nation. And you could see that roughly California and the nation, the curve is on the same trajectory. What's a little bit different about Santa Barbara County is that we're about one week behind in lagging, and the scale is much lower. The non-smooth curve that you see is most likely artificial due to lag in lab reporting, and it's more obvious because of the small sample size. You have heard that we, as a county, have embarked on modeling efforts. So, what I can share with you is that we are looking at three models. One is from Penn Medicine, the other one is from a Nahir Lab, there's, it's not Mayhir, it's Nahir Lab, and the University of Washington. So, the key variables for these models, they take into consideration the number of cases that we have, the number of hospitalization, the number of folks in the ICU, and the number of patients on ventilation. In just really roughly looking at the three models, we know that there's a range in peak dates. So, that peak date ranges from April 26 to July 28. So, peak date really refers to when we crest, where we're at the top of that curve. While the model is limited by the small size of our county and the lack of precise data, it does offer us critical information on what we should plan looking forward. So, we're running the models and debating which really reflects our local needs. But as we do that, we're planning for the best-case scenario or the worst-case scenario. So, as more data becomes available, we can scale that need. So, based on our preliminary modeling, we are aggressively pursuing 500 to 1,000 alternate care beds, and these alternate care sites will allow our hospitals to care for the critically ill. What's interesting when we, in our initial modeling efforts, what's interesting is that as we play with the percent of social distancing in our community, that has the largest impact on the number of cases, and it has the largest impact on hospitalization rates. So, what that means, what the modeling efforts really mean is it allows us to further work with our hospital partners with surge planning. My team, Jan Kogler, and her hospital emergency preparedness team have been working on surge capacity with hospital partners, and will be meeting with leadership teams from the hospitals this week to get their input on our final model. So, in terms of alternate care sites, as I mentioned earlier, we are hoping, we've asked EOC, and we're really planning on 1,000 beds with the goal of 500, standing up the 500 beds as early as two weeks. With regards to medical equipment, so while we're planning, while we're modeling, we're still aggressively pursuing resource for our community. So, we are submitting a request today to the state for thermometers, ventilators. As I mentioned earlier in a previous meeting, we will be requesting 100 ventilators, 500 disposable ventilators, supplies to run the three alternate care sites, and specimen collection supplies. There was a question about how many vents do we have in our community. As of today, we have 85 ventilators. So, that includes the 64 ventilators and 21 surge ventilators. And we know that the hospitals have put ventilator, ventilators on their order lists. Immigrant Health Rapid Response Collaborative. So, this is a group of committed community members and academics of UCSB that realize that our immigrant communities need additional support in terms of bilingual and bicultural education. The group has identified five areas of priority. The number one is health education; number two is interpretation and translation; three is access to healthcare; four is communication; five, community outreach and mobilization; and six, other social determinants of health. So, as a public health department, we quickly addressed last week access to healthcare. We created a, an opportunity for anyone who has COVID-like symptoms to enter into our healthcare system free of care. And we, we pushed that flyer, that information out, and it was translated as well as interpreted by our community members. We want to make sure that any community members who are feeling sick, that cost is not a barrier into, entering into our healthcare system. So, we are, as a public health department, again, we are meeting weekly. This effort is led by Dr. Melissa Smith. She is a physician at UCSB as well as a provider in our public health department. Coordinated response, want to point out that our website continues to be updated on a daily basis. www-publichealthsbc.org is a site where people can get updated statistics and information. We have our call center available for community members at 833-688-5551, as well as a community wellness call center. This is where we can provide emotional support to anyone in our community who may need it, and that number is 888-868-1649. As always, 211 is available, as well as CDC and CDPH websites. And I'd like to end with practice social distancing always, and stay home if you are sick always.
Thank you, Dr. Don Rinoso. That was a great presentation. Questions from board members? Supervisor Williams?
Well, did I hear 84 vents?
Correct.
And just to give a context.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. You, Terry, and you reported to me on the 9th that there was 46. So, that's, that means that you're making progress, that our medical community is making some progress in having greater supplies even before tapping into this order that you have to the state.
Correct.
So, I think that should give people some assurance that you guys have been working on this ventilator issue and have made progress, nearly doubling the amount.
Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work, Dr. Don Rinoso. It's been 24/7 for you and all the people working with you, and we appreciate that. Could you talk a little bit more about the immigrant health education and materials, and how we can all support you in getting this information out to the various people and groups that we work with?
Sure. So, we right now are, the collaborative is making, meeting on a weekly basis, and we are, rather than reinventing the wheel, we're taking health education material that's already published either on our website or via CDC, and making sure that they're bicultural and they are bilingual. And the, the, the big, the big need that we're acknowledging is that within our immigrant community, there are community members that, it's not in written language, the indigenous populations. So, we are partnering up with our community interpreters to be able to do that. And so, this is an effort that is joint, and that will be supported by philanthropic activities as well.
Are there any additional questions?
Yes.
Supervisor Hart.
Chair Hart.
Lavenino?
So, and I think that's important, but in speaking with the hospital, it didn't seem like it is the Oaxacan community or the farmworker community right now that's hospitalized. It's, while highly Hispanic rate, it is also, it seems more like a middle-class that is, that's been affected immediately. And for some reason, the message isn't getting to, you know, our locals here in Santa Maria. So, my question is, how do we, is there a strategy, you know, in our county of, you know, either doing PSAs or text messaging or something that kind of helps people understand, you know, what they should be doing? Because what we're doing right now, I mean, our press conferences are great. I watch them, but I don't expect that that has a higher, high view rate. And so, how do we get to that average person that's just staying home right now or not staying home? And how do we, how do we contact that person, and what do we, what's our strategy on that?
Great, great point, Supervisor Lavenino. So, I will say that now that we've had a moment to breathe, that is a question that I will pose to the collaborative. Beyond what we're currently doing, how do we mobilize community leaders within the immigrant community, within the Latino community, to be able to be our partners and, and be our spokesperson to change the norm and the behavior in their community? But here is Terry as well.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you. It's just hard going back and forth when we're, when we're out here like this. So, if I do, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Lavenino?
For me, it's, you said the collaborative meets once a week, and, you know, the way this thing's evolving, we're already behind. And I understand you've had a lot of other things to do. So, I would offer myself that I would be happy to work with Gina or whoever that can craft something. We definitely have folks up here in Santa Maria that the community listens to. I know who those people are. And it would just be nice if we could say, hey, you know, I can get something done in the next 24 or 48 hours. We just, I just need to know. Give me a message. We can have it delivered, and it's going to cost practically nothing. But I really feel like if we wait around for another week, and then by the time you craft something, you get it back to us, and we're talking two weeks, at that point, it's too late. So, if we could work offline, but I just need the, the go-ahead from, from this body and from whoever that can tell us, yes, this is a priority, this is something we need to do so that I can do it.
Supervisor Lavenino, hi, this is Mona. I just want to, yes, we would love your assistance in that. The Joint Information Center is doing a lot, and I want Terry just to brief you quickly about all the things that we, our baseline is to do almost everything in Spanish that other agencies aren't doing, but we've always done that for disasters. So, I want her to give a little background, but yeah, we would love your assistance in doing that.
Great, thank you, Mona. Chair Hart, Supervisor Lavenino, absolutely. As our CEO mentioned, we will use every avenue available to us to communicate with our public during this crisis, absolutely. We immediately reached out to Marion Regional Medical Center yesterday. They made an offer through their public outreach individuals once we became aware of the concern yesterday. We reached out to Marion. We also immediately reached out to the city of Santa Maria. We have been working with their PIOs as part of our operator, our OA, operator area PIOs. So, we made an immediate contact yesterday afternoon to take them up on their offer of support as well. But in terms of what we are currently doing, over one month ago, I think we were one of the first counties to stand up a fully translated Spanish website with all materials specific to our county in Spanish. We also have produced over the course of the last several days, several videos that we'll be releasing, and we are, we definitely would like to do a broader Spanish-speaking campaign. However, in addition, we need to reinforce our early messages. Very early on, we had information out about the basics, as Dr. Don Rinoso indicated, wash your hands, socially distance, et cetera. We need to continue to reinforce those messages across the entire population because that's what's going to make a difference, and we will work on that. So, yes, we will be in touch this afternoon to.
Great.
Make sure we get key messages.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that. That was a very quick turnaround.
Yep, absolutely.
So, I have another question about the vents on the order. So, is there a priority number, or, I mean, we just, I need to know more how about that works, so that 85 vents is, is better than the number we've heard in the past, but from what I'm understanding, these patients are now staying on the vents longer than anybody had originally anticipated. And so, you know, a number that we had might actually be, you know, half of what we actually thought we would need. So, how does this work? Is there any, I mean, do we just file something with, with the state, or how does this actually happen?
Yes. So, we submitted a request for 100 vents, and how many of the 100 in our order to be gotten is anyone's guess. In addition to that, we have ordered 500 disposable vents, and in hopes that between the 100 vents and the 500 disposable vents, that our community will get some. In addition to that, again, the hospitals are pursuing purchasing of vents from non-state stock. So, that is a situation that I think every community is worried about, and as the, our nation's supply of vents come online, that is something that we will, again, aggressively pursue. And with regards to your earlier question about how those vents will be distributed, we have a fairly rigorous algorithm for dispersing scarce medical supplies that the community providers, hospitals, emergency preparedness experts are on, and we allocate the resources via that method.
Okay. I had one more question. It was about the immigrant health rapid response. Can you explain, so you said something about that if folks show signs that they would come in free of charge, can you explain that?
Sure. So, early on, we had heard in various communities, not Santa Barbara County, that there were COVID patients who were sick and didn't get the care that they needed due to cost being a barrier. So, when that was raised to our attention from our community partners, quickly, our team assembled and said, because we are a safety net, what can we do? So, typically, the co-pay is $45 to, that is their cost of share for us to initiate the patient visit. That, for now, has been waived, so any member without insurance can, with COVID-like symptoms, can come into our healthcare centers, any of our five healthcare centers, and be able to get the care that they need. And the other question was some concerns about, well, what if I came in with COVID-like symptoms, but it turns out that I am negative? That doesn't really matter, as long as you present with those COVID-like symptoms, we will treat you and treat you at no cost. And so, we were, and I want to just really pause and give a shout-out to my team for making this happen, my electronic health records team, my fiscal team, providers for quickly hearing a community need and putting it into action within a few days.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Adam, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just going to refrain from going into the individual slides and stuff. I really have a problem with these nominal numbers getting thrown out. I think we should be looking at things more in percentages, and I really don't like our graph on page two that is a cartoon because there's no numbers associated with it. That's depicting flattening the curve because we don't know that any of that stuff's true, and it gives a false impression of what's happening or likely to happen, and we don't know any of that stuff. So, I'm not a big fan of the way we're dealing with this. I wish that we were dealing with it with more rational numbers and converting things to percentages. Specifically, page four, the, the numbers on page, or the graphs on page four should be apples-to-apples comparison, instead of just nominal numbers, because I just don't think that means anything.
Supervisor Hartman, did you have a question?
I have one more question.
Supervisor Lavenino?
I was just wondering if, if we could get a quick update, I guess this would be the right time for, on the Santa Maria High Shelter, and how that's working or not working.
I don't have that information readily available.
All right.
We'll have somebody get that to you. We have additional presentations.
Thank you.
From Sheriff Brown and Fire Chief Hartwig. So, maybe in the interim time, we'll have staff available to answer that question. Supervisor Lavenino?
Thank you.
Next up, Sheriff Bill Brown. Would you please come? Thank you for being here, and thank you and your department for all your service in this moment.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board, members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present some information to you about how law enforcement collectively and the sheriff's department in specifics is dealing with and responding to this unique and unprecedented set of challenges that we're facing. The sheriff's office and all of our law enforcement partners throughout the county are faced with maintaining law and order, protecting the citizens of our county, protecting our own employees and those in our care from not only the day-to-day challenges that we face, but also this new threat of COVID-19. To that end, our county law enforcement chiefs have united in our efforts to educate the public and seek voluntary compliance with the stay-at-home order and other public health orders, as well as protecting the public from those who may seek to victimize people during these difficult times. And I want to take the opportunity to summarize some of the adaptations and preparations that we have undergone as an agency to both combat and prepare for this pandemic. And let me summarize in four key areas. One is law enforcement operations. Two will be custody operations. Three is the coroner's function. And last but not least, what we are doing as an employer. As far as law enforcement generally goes, at present, our current deployment of frontline law enforcement resources has not changed. We are currently deploying normal patrols throughout the county, and we do have investigators who are still investigating crimes, albeit a focus and an emphasis on the more serious crimes. Deputies assigned to patrol operations have been supplied with personal protective equipment, or PPE, and they have been given guidelines for when to don this protective gear. Dispatchers are screening 911 calls to determine if first responders should don protective equipment so that our first responders arrive at emergency scenes prepared. Deputies on patrol are using discretion in their contacts with the public to both maintain social distancing whenever possible, and also to minimize the number of people who are brought into custody and ultimately into our custody facilities. We are using online and telephonic reporting. We have a robust online reporting system that is available to members of the public through our website at www.sbsheriff.org, and many types of reports can be reported online and also can be followed up with, by telephone. We've developed staffing plans and redeployment plans in the event that we are impacted with a significant reduction of our available personnel, or if there's a need for increased law enforcement presence for any given situation. As an example, many of our investigators have redirected their daily tasks to limit their interaction and potential exposure to the public so that they may be available to respond to primary frontline law enforcement functions if needed. All of our county's law enforcement agencies have, as I said, presented a unified front in coordinating and communicating, and we conference regularly for mutual aid and regional cohesiveness. And we and the sheriff's office have law enforcement embedded in our EOC and as members of the IMAT, and we are coordinating our activities and strategy with our other county partners. As far as enforcement of the public health order, that united approach by all law enforcement throughout the county seems to be bearing good fruit. Our efforts have been to gain voluntary compliance with the order and to collaborate and educate with the public and with businesses and the community generally on the necessity to comply with the orders. The Health and Safety Code authorizes health officers to take necessary steps to prevent the spread of infectious disease, and it grants the authority to the sheriff to enforce those orders. And that same authority is granted to chiefs of police and to the district attorney and to all of our collective sworn law enforcement officers. If voluntary compliance is not achieved and a given situation requires enforcement action to limit the spread of the virus, we are prepared to take necessary steps to ensure the public's safety and the effectiveness of the health officer's orders. The levels of cooperation that we are seeing, however, are exceedingly high, and the vast majority of people are adhering to the state and the local orders. I can't emphasize enough, however, that it is critically important that everyone in our community embrace this stay-at-home order and understand its gravity, and understand the importance of it in the collective strategy on how we are going to contain and ultimately beat this virus. This is a highly contagious, deadly virus, and it is not just a strain of the flu, it is something that we all have a responsibility to work together. And the, you've heard it ad nauseam, but the idea of flattening the curve is critical. but the idea of flattening the curve is critically important, and it's what we can do collectively right now. As I mentioned, we've received a small number of reports of violations of the order. We have contacted individuals, we have, through persuasion and through education, been able to gain compliance with them. Some of the calls have been misunderstandings in terms of what is and what is not permitted under the order, the state order. But we will be steadfast, and I want to make it very clear, diligent in seeking and bringing to justice any criminal offenders who would attempt to take advantage of this situation to prey on other people. And that includes not only outright and obvious crimes like burglary and fraud and theft, but it also includes those who would repeatedly or egregiously violate the stay-at-home order. I'd like to now talk a little bit about what we're doing in the jail to protect our inmates, our staff, and the public alike. We've been in constant communication with the courts, with the district attorney, and the public defender, working on measures to ensure the continuity of access to the jail. Court operations have been suspended for most proceedings, except for arraignments, detention hearings for juveniles, the issuance of emergency protective orders, and a handful of other emergency legal actions. We have installed and we will be implementing video court appearances this week, which will reduce the number of inmates who have to be physically transported to court. The court has taken unprecedented steps to allow for ex parte appearances, which means that in cases that are before them now, they can be heard using only an attorney and not a defendant himself or herself, without the need for that person's physical presence. We've increased the jail capacity, released credits for sentenced inmates from an existing twenty-one days that we had already implemented as a result of jail overcrowding and to limit our population, and we have modified that to thirty days at this time. But we're still looking at how an inmate scores on their likelihood to reoffend, and using that in the ultimate decision to release that inmate early. We've examined hundreds of inmates for early release and maximized our electronic monitoring. Unfortunately, due to the current crisis, the supply of ankle bracelets and GPS units are about as hard to find as M95 masks are. So, we have ordered more, and as we get them, we will expand that program as well. The probation department's pre-trial unit has been likewise reassessing hundreds of inmates for inclusion in their recognizance programs. And behavioral wellness has stepped up in their efforts to screen and assess inmates that have behavioral health needs, to get them released for placement in the community, in community-based programs and housing, so that they can be released from jail and have continuity of care. To protect those who are already in jail, who must remain there, and new inmates who are booked for serious or violent charges, we have cleared several housing areas for reception housing. All newly admitted inmates are spending their first fourteen days in incarceration, isolated from our general population, thereby reducing the potential of introducing the virus into the jail. In addition, we have consolidated our most at-risk inmates in one wing of our facility. This has allowed us to restrict access and separate them from potential sources of exposure. Our WellPath healthcare partners and command staff have developed a state-of-the-art response plan that is being shared and copied across the state. It follows CDC, NCCHC, state, and local public health guidance to detect, respond, and contain the disease. To date, there have been no confirmed inmate cases of COVID-19. We're taking strong steps to protect the integrity of the jail and the perimeter of the jail in our quest to keep the virus out. We've instituted temperature checks for all persons, employees, and others alike, vendors, repair people, and what have you. Anyone that has to come into the jail for business has to have their temperature checked, and if they have a high fever, they will not be granted access to the jail, period. We've also limited access to our staff dining hall within the jail to only those employees and contract staff who work in our facility. We've suspended all inmate visitation for the foreseeable future. However, we understand the impact that this has on inmates and families, and we've taken steps to keep them in touch with their loved ones. These include giving them additional free telephone minutes, and also providing them with free postage-paid postcards, so that the inmates can stay connected with families and friends while they are incarcerated. We've also expanded the availability of our educational Wi-Fi tablet program. This allows for longer access to more inmate housing areas in order to provide the inmates with constructive activities that they can pass the time with. Some of the most vigorous efforts have come from the front lines. Field deputies and police officers throughout the county, as I say, have encouraged the exercise of discretion wherever possible, and have reduced the number of physical arrests significantly. The rate of admissions to the jail has decreased to levels that we have never seen before in modern history. This has played a significant role in reducing our daily population. Yesterday, our count in the jail was six-hundred-and-eighty-five. That's the lowest number that we have seen in the Santa Barbara jail for more than fifty years. Our law enforcement and custody staff have always been the first to act and the last to stand down in a crisis, no matter the potential for personal harm, and the custody staff in particular are doing a tremendous job, and I just want to single them out, as well as our patrol people, for the tremendous job that they are doing. As far as the coroner's operation goes, while we are hopeful that our efforts throughout the county will result in a decreased number of deaths associated with the virus, we're planning for a surge in the number of coroner's investigations and the overall impact on the coroner's system. The Sheriff's Coroner's Bureau is actively engaged with the statewide coroner's mutual aid system. We've expanded our local surge capacity in the event of a rise in mortality rates in the county, and we are prepared with staffing plans, with disease prevention and contamination efforts, if we see an increase related to COVID-19. And lastly, some remarks about the Sheriff's Office as an employer. As an employer of nearly nine hundred people, who are in a variety of full-time, part-time, and volunteer capacities, we are taking many precautions and proactive steps to ensure the health and welfare of our employees. We are considered an essential workforce, and all of our employees play a key role in keeping the public safe and our frontline law enforcement operations and corrections functions operating. As you are aware through our press releases and our own reporting to the Public Health Department, we have unfortunately had a number of our employees affected by the coronavirus. To date, we've had five sheriff's employees and one contract worker test positive for the virus. I'm pleased to say that none of them has required hospitalization, and one of them has recovered and has already returned to work, and the other four are recovering at home under quarantine. We've had seventeen more employees who have been or are currently on or quarantined by order of the Public Health Department due to possible exposure, and another eight or more are on self-isolation due to possible symptoms or other collateral exposure. Many of those quarantined exhibited no signs or symptoms, and many of them are already back to work after the prescribed quarantine period. With an agency as large as ours comprised of people who are required to interact with the public on a regular basis by virtue of the work we do, exposures are likely, and we have taken many steps to minimize those exposures to our employees. Just a few examples of those include educating our employees continually on proper hand-washing and other prophylactic measures that can be taken, providing cleaning materials and hand sanitizer throughout our workplaces, and encouraging a repeated cleaning of common work areas and surfaces, increasing the frequency of janitorial and deep cleanings of our stations, our workplaces, and our vehicles, identifying and authorizing employees who can to telecommute or work from home or an alternate location in order to minimize exposures, using Skype and Zoom and other social distancing measures in our routine meetings. We've also recommended our employees do not carpool or ride collectively in cars with one another unless absolutely necessary for officer's safety or other mandated reasons. And we've modified the work schedules of employees working in close quarters, such as those in our business office and systems and technology, to limit the amount of people in the workspace at any given time to allow for social distancing. Those are just a few of the measures that we're taking, and we are evaluating their effectiveness on a daily basis. In closing, I'd just like to say that we at the Sheriff's Office are committed to being leaders in our community. We are committed to setting the example, to maintaining a positive attitude and mindset throughout this emergency, and to doing what we can do to pull our community together during this stressful time, so that we may all work together effectively to achieve the best possible outcomes. We're all in this together for the long haul, that we will, if we cooperate and if we work according to the plan, be able to ultimately contain and defeat this COVID virus. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Sheriff Brown, for the very comprehensive report. Supervisor Williams, and then Supervisor Hartman?
I was just wondering about, you were trying to explain, first of all, thank you for your efforts. I know this is a huge effort to balance public safety on, in terms of crime, with public safety in terms of reducing risk of infection. But of course, part of the question of the number of people that are in the jail is usually a function of how fast our court system is going, and if that it's going slower, do you have some concerns that that will mean that we have more of a population than is necessary if not all court operations are going forward?
Well, Supervisor Williams, through the chair, I suspect that we're going to see court operations, I think they're just paused now, trying to get a handle on how they're going to adapt and operate in this new environment. But with video conferencing and with alternatives, with the ex parte hearing process and others, they're doing what they can do to try to modify the current system to adapt to the pressures and the challenges that we face. We are going to see, I suspect, for a period of time, while this is all being put together and coordinated, perhaps somewhat of a slowdown, but that has been ameliorated to some degree by the fact that we have released a significant number of inmates early already, and because the tap has, in essence, been turned down in terms of the inflow of prisoners as a result of officers exercising discretion, issuing citations instead of physical arrests if necessary, issuing warnings if they can suffice rather than a citation in certain instances. And the reality is that we are, you know, we're not going to stop, crime will not stop while this COVID-19 situation is upon us, and sadly, we've seen that with a murder that occurred in Lompoc and other serious crimes that we're still going to have to arrest and incarcerate people for. But I think that, you know, it's like everything else in our system, it will adapt, and we will, we will work with the courts and work with our criminal justice partners to make the system as efficient as possible, and to keep as many people out of jail as we possibly can, and to protect those who have to stay in jail to the best of our ability.
Of course, it should be a sign of some level of civilization that crime isn't going up, you know, all of us that have a tendency to watch post-apocalyptic fiction, you know, usually people go crazy in these fictional accounts, and it says something about our society that in these times, that crime is either staying even or going down, with the exception of additional domestic disturbances, as you explained last week. Do you, can you, obviously, you have to think about the problem that's in front of you first, but in order for us to have a sustained response to this, we are going to have to address fiscal needs in the next year. If you are able to execute some of these measures effectively and sustain them, then obviously, that would help the county and help the Sheriff's Department deal with these fiscal issues and make sure that we have resources for other things, and just hope that you can put that into some thought or have someone, you know, working on that question as you go forward, because it would substantially improve our ability, of course, to adapt to tougher fiscal times if you can continue to execute maybe not this low of population, but a lower population than we were otherwise thinking that we would have. And then the last thing, you know, I get a lot from residents sort of debating or wondering, you know, who they, I think residents feel silly calling 911 for, because they see someone playing a volleyball game or something like that, but where should, can you give us some examples of what residents should be calling you guys about in terms of enforcing social distancing, and can you give out non-911, the right non-911 office number, so that people don't feel like they're bumping something that might be of greater concern?
Right. If there is a need to report something, people can call the Emergency Operations Center's Call Center. Unfortunately, I don't have that number immediately at hand here, but I will certainly make sure that we get that and post that, perhaps later on in this broadcast for you. I'm very pleased to say we really haven't had that many calls, and we've had a few to our 911 center, which we would like to discourage. If it's not an emergency, please don't call 911. You can utilize a business number, or as I say, call directly to the Call Center, and your call will be recorded and then passed on either to the enforcement authorities or to the planning authorities to determine if it's something that they maybe need to notify a business on or something like that. And then if I can just comment on your first set of comments, Supervisor Williams, certainly in, you know, we see the major potential, if not likelihood, of economic downturn, and the winds of that are certainly starting to blow, and we recognize that and understand that, but everybody has to understand that the Sheriff's Office is already in a weakened state from the standpoint of our overall staffing. We're, all of our functions really are essentially at either minimal or critical staffing levels, and there's not, you know, you heard it said a number of times in the last budget process, there's really no stretch left in the rubber band. We are really down to really minimal levels, and it's going to be very important to recognize and balance public safety needs as a priority as we move forward during difficult times, perhaps to a greater extent than it has up until this point, because it's our ability to serve those, particularly those who rely on us for frontline law enforcement service in our unincorporated areas, is going to be impacted by this, as well as those we contract for services as far as the economic conditions of the cities. But we are definitely going to really face some challenges, and it's going to require a set of priorities that really makes public safety the number-one priority.
Let me just articulate a realistic scenario that I'm trying to ask you to think about, which is that now that you're adapting with video arraignment and with other things, is I'd much rather be spending that money on adequate frontline patrol, especially given that petty crime goes up during bad economic times, than on, you know, the prison population that's seventy percent awaiting trial, I'd much rather see fifty percent, you know, and see some savings from, that that incurs, so that we have adequate public safety resources for the frontline, as you articulate.
And I would certainly agree with you, and I can assure you that we're doing everything we can do to embrace technology and to use it to leverage our limited resources and to make things to make things more efficient. And I think that the public that we serve recognizes that and is, through this process as well as others, is going to adapt to that as well. So I'm with you on that.
The Call Center number, for folks who are interested in reporting incidences of people not complying with the stay-at-home order, businesses that remain open, anything like that, is 833-688-5551.
Supervisor Hartman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. What was the jail population before the crisis started?
I can tell you that we have, I don't have that number immediately available, but I can tell you that, for example, if you look at our month, our numbers as of Monday compared to where our numbers were the same month a year ago, for example, our numbers are down by about 20% from where they were. So about 20%. So we were just hovering right around the 900 level, and we're hovering right around the 700 level right now.
Thank you. And I've had a lot of queries about how we're taking care of our first responders, so I appreciate that. If a law enforcement person has somebody in their family who has an underlying condition, what accommodations do we make in that situation?
We have, to my knowledge, only had that happen one time, and the law enforcement, custody officer in that situation was placed under isolation at home along with his spouse. In terms of, we have had the opposite happen, where it would appear as though the officer or the employee has contracted it, and at the same time, their family members have. So we have multiple family members with it at the same time that they have it. We currently don't have a mechanism to allow for the separation, if you will, give an alternative housing opportunity to our staff, primarily, I think, because if it gets to that point, the likelihood is that they have already been exposed anyway because of the incubation period for the disease. And based on our consultation with the Health Department, we are probably, I mean, we have been taking a lot of steps now that we may not be able to in the future if and when the rate of infection spreads. We're, you know, going to get to the point, I think, where unless somebody is symptomatic, we're not going to really be able to do much of anything if we don't have enough people to staff our critical operations. And that's really what's happened in many other areas of the country where you've seen this, as the rate of infection increases. I think the likelihood is we're all ultimately going to get exposed to this at one time or another. The goal is really to just push that down the road as long as possible.
Any questions from board members in Santa Maria?
Okay.
No, I don't think we have anything up here.
Thank you. We next have a presentation. Thank you, Sheriff Brown. Appreciate all the work and all the work that your deputies are doing to keep us safe. Next presentation is from Fire Chief Mark Hartwig. Chief Hartwig, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ms. McSarrett. Just wanted to, if I could, address kind of three areas today. One is the departmental efforts, specifically county fire and what we're doing specifically on, in response to COVID, our operational area efforts, the OES fire rescue operational area, and then maybe just finish it with some kind of personal impacts that I've picked up on specifically related to the department. As the sheriff said, we are starting immediately upon the call. You all know that more than 70% of the calls that we receive in the fire department are for medical emergencies. And so screening those calls is the best way we possibly can helps those crews as they respond to these medical emergencies. Initially, when we were looking to keep the virus out of the county, really more of a control scenario, we were only responding to certain calls with our personal protective equipment. Now that we've really gone into a community spread situation, we're treating every call as if it could be, the patient could be COVID positive, and so we're responding appropriately. I brought in some PPE to show you what we might look like. We do look a little bit different, and I think the biggest difference is the Tyvek suit. We would love to use gowns, but gowns are in short order. In fact, we understand you can't find them anywhere. So we do have an abundance in this county of Tyvek suits, and so right now, our personnel are responding in those when they're in proximity to somebody who could be potentially a COVID positive. So they'll have the gloves on that you would normally see, of course, we have those on every call. We have what we refer to as the duck bill, which is that N95 mask, and some of them are round, but often you'll see this configuration. They'll have their eye protection on, and then they'll have this Tyvek suit on. So we think we have a line on some gowns, and so it looks a little less ominous when we're interacting with the public, but right now, it'll be a full white gown, more than likely, with a hood and booties. Again, a way for us to, and our folks to, keep from getting any viral load on their uniforms and then going back, of course, to the station or to the market or wherever they might be to carry out their daily activities. The other thing that we're, that you might see is you have the surgical mask, and we'll carry these if the patient exhibits any signs and their medical condition allows it, we'll actually pace a surgical mask on the patient. So you'll see that as well. Get back to my notes here. After they go and treat the patient, they're coming back to the station, and because they really live in a house-like family setting, really a communal living area, it's really hard to be social distanced there. So what they're doing is they're, we've set up assessment stations, and so we have thermometers and some guidelines to use as they come back into the station, they come to work, and then throughout the day, they will assess themselves typically with a thermometer check, and so that they can kind of trend their own health status throughout the day. They're on for 24 hours, makes it even more important that they have that available to them. In case of an exposure, and we have had one exposure, and we define an exposure not by simply somebody who you come in contact with in full PPE, personal protective equipment, but somebody who you've been exposed to that is a presumptive positive and you didn't have that equipment on. We have had that case, and in that case, we isolated the crew, reported to Public Health the potential exposure. We isolated the crew until we got results back from Public Health, essentially confirming or denying the presence of the virus. And so we have those plans in place as well. We, communication is huge for us, and being able to communicate regularly and daily on what's going on on each shift in each part of the county is important. We have a daily operations call at 7:45, where the battalion chiefs really essentially do a virtual pass down over the phone, and so we're able to listen in and catch some of the issues that the field has and the operations folks have quickly. And then life goes on. We still have structured fires, we have had some oil spills, one rather large oil spill, and so continuing to answer the call for other incidents as necessary. And then we recognize our role in the larger county effort. This is going to be a team effort, it is now, and we know we'll play a role in that as we, so a bit outward facing as we look at the way we respond to make sure that we're responding well with the sheriff, Public Health, our transport partners, and then, of course, our operational area partners. I'll go quickly into that, our operational area efforts. We recognized very early on that we were duplicating a lot of efforts. Generally, firefighters are problem solvers, and so we figure out if it doesn't neatly fit into a box, when somebody calls in a problem, it usually goes over to us, and then we try to figure out how to bring order to a situation or an incident. We have one of the very best group of problem solvers in the county, we have an incident management team here, one of only eight in the state of California that is rostered or listed for both CalOES and federal use. And the county chiefs got together very quickly and engaged that incident management team, and it's made up of members of departments throughout the county. And they're helping us coordinate our efforts specifically as it relates to personal protective equipment and the acquisition of that equipment, and then some of the plans and procedures that we've all put in place, trying to come together again and redo some of those duplicate efforts. And then a lot of, you can imagine, contingency planning. We are looking down the road at running out of PPE. There's, there are departments in the state that have run out of PPE, and then what do you do then? How do you respond to patients that need you if you don't have the PPE that you need? Obviously, a one line of communication with ordering through Public Health and the EOC, County OEM, is important. And then, of course, what happens when we have a fire during the time of social distancing for both evacuations and sheltering and response in base camps as well. Communication is huge there as well. Communication, we do a daily operational area fire rescue call. We include our law enforcement partners and the sheriff in on that one, as well as AMR, and that's a great line of communication, again, addressing those issues daily as they come up and then getting resolution to those. Very quickly, if I could, personally, I would tell you, I've been asked by more than one media outlet about how this impacts the men and women on the floor, in the fire stations, and on staff in your offices. And I have to tell you, I guess we're always ready for the big one in our business, that we just never really felt like the big one was the coronavirus. But it does just present itself as another problem to deal with. I will tell you that as I'm out talking with the troops and communicating with them, I see a resolve to take care of the situation, to play their part, and I also see a desire for us to, their only concern really is their family, and to make sure that as they're out dealing with this and playing the role that we need them to play in the county, that their families are well taken care of, their health and safety are being looked out after. And I think really, as we address social distancing and PPE and policies and procedures to include isolation and quarantine and testing, all of those plans in place really help us make sure that their families know that we're looking out after them, as well as their loved ones are away, taking care of the community. So that's really all I have. I think communication, again, on a personal level is important. We do an Instagram Live every Friday where I can engage with the communities and any, the members of the organization, any members of their family that just want to know, hey, what's next? And then we open it up for questions, and it's good for me to keep a close pulse on how they're feeling as well and what their needs are. That's the end of report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chief Hartwig. Appreciate all of your efforts as well, and I noticed a significant addition to the Emergency Operations Center when the IMAT team from both the sheriff's department and the fire department reintegrated with our emergency management folks. It's, you know, having that force multiplier and all the extra experience is really helping everybody do their jobs better. So thank you both for staffing that and helping us in this effort as we scale to a higher level than was initially hoped. So are there questions for Chief Hartwig? Okay, well, thank you all very much for your time and attention and presentation today. I know you have lots to do, Supervisor Williams, do you have a comment?
Just one last minute. I mean, if it is, if there is a possibility that we would be running out of PPE, please let us know. I mean, that's, you know, would be a concern.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hartman.
Yes, thank you. I just had a parting comment to make, and that is I received something from Bill Saroni, our former superintendent of education, who, it was an emergency room doctor that sees 20%, at a hospital, 20% of the patients in New York City. And the point was, wash your hands and never, never, never touch your face, that what they're learning is the mouth, the nose, the eyes are really conduits from the hands, and so we may have to learn new habits, but washing, so I just wanted to add to that, washing hands, but never touch your face.
We also have requests from three speakers, I believe, to speak on this item, so let's next go to the public's comment.
Yes, Chair Hart and members of the board, we have three requests to speak on this item. I have one letter to be read into the record, and then we will have two callers. We will begin with a letter to be read into the record from Corey Hayman. Dear members of the Board of Supervisors, attached, please accept for public comment a letter prepared by Brian Goble and sent to various elected officials stressing the need for daily, timely, and complete data reported, reporting by the state of California regarding COVID-19 for purposes of accurate modeling and transparency. It is worth noting that as of March 30th, 10:30 a.m., the state has not provided updated data on COVID-19 since 2:00 p.m. on March 27th, nearly three full days. Since the Board of Supervisors meeting of last week, the county Public Health Department has greatly improved its daily data reporting to the public on COVID-19 in Santa Barbara County. For purposes of monitoring when the curve is flattening, please consider directing county health to provide bar graphs or similar visual tools demonstrating the daily rate of new infections, hospitalizations, and other relevant data. The Los Angeles Times has a tracking tool for your reference. Thank you for your consideration, Corey Hayman.
And just as a point of information, the Public Health Department's website does have the things that Ms. Hayman was asking for. That was recently added to the COVID-19 portal, and that can be reached at publichealthsbc.org.
And now we will go to Andy Caldwell on the phone, to be followed by Tom Becker.
Mr. Caldwell? Oops, we're calling you, excuse me, I'm sorry.
This is Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. I wish that the board would have a broader discussion on some of the issues that got brought up today, including the potentiality that this effort to flatten the curve could last through July. What does that mean for our economy? What does that mean for people who have lost their jobs and people that are going to lose their business? And to tell you the truth, one of the first alarm bells that went off for me is when Gavin Newsom, at his original press conference, said that this thing would not last many, many months. You know, the bottom line here is we have to ask the question whether or not people could successfully social distance at work. The other thing that's been ignored, as best as I could tell, is Harty Diagnostics here in Santa Maria has a test that works pretty quickly. We don't, haven't heard whether the county or the hospitals have, are employing this tool. What I keep hearing from people as a result of my radio show and the newspaper columns is that a vast majority of people that are showing up at either doctors' offices or hospitals are being told to go home and recuperate at home, and many of them are not even being tested. We would like to have the stats on that. How many people are being told to go home without being tested? And how many people that are told to go home actually tested positive and/or tested negative? These are some of the stats that would help us get a handle on our situation. To get to Supervisor Adams' point, as far as putting numbers, we've asked for this for three weeks for the county to put numbers on their two curves, the steep curve and the flattened curve. If you were to use something like the cruise ship, what the doctor at Cottage Hospital called the closed bucket, you could expect upwards of 90,000 people in this county to be infected. You could expect up to You could expect up to 4,000 people to require hospitalization and up to 400 deaths. Again, 80, up to 88, 90,000 people infected, 4,000 hospitalizations and upwards of 400 deaths, if in fact the numbers in other locales from China, Singapore, South Korea, the state of Washington, and another bunch of other places holds true. But the other thing that they're not discussing, and I asked this at the board three weeks ago, there's a whole nother way of looking at this thing, and that is is herd immunity of isolating the people that are particularly susceptible to this disease, but allowing the other people to go about their business because 80% of the people are going to have either no symptoms or mild symptoms, and there's, there's a chance you create herd immunity so that it doesn't come back next year even worse than we had it this year.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Your time is-
You need to have a long-term strategic plan on how to deal with this economically because the crime rates and a lot of other things are going to go up based on poverty due to loss of jobs and losses of business. The last point-
Mr. Caldwell, your time, your 40 seconds past your time.
... the Valley Community Hospital, the Champion Center, the base, and even doctors' offices for surge capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
And now we will go to Tom Becker on the phone.
You know what? We got to make these phone call, call-in things permanent. You know, I'm here at home. I'm in my office. I can fact-check you people so easy on the BS you people are saying. It's easy. I got access to computers, telephones, I even have people to double-check what I'm looking at. Getting back to the tax deferment. You said, oh, no, the county's going to allow people blah, blah, blah. Well, I went on the county tax collector website. It's not there when you said it's there. There's absolutely no evidence at all that anybody can easily find about a tax deferment or, you know, a deferment on interest. So I went and called the tax office up in Santa Maria, talked to a woman by name of Anne. I told her, I just spent 20 minutes trying to find this thing you people say exists. You know what the insulting response was from her? Well, you have to go down to the very bottom page, and you see that little word that says notice, click on that. I go, well, how is anybody supposed to even know that, lady? How would anybody know that you're supposed to go all the way down there and click on that? So I went ahead and did it. You know what you're not telling people? This is not a tax deferment. If you don't pay your property tax, that is a delinquent property tax. That's going to be on your credit report. That's going to be a public document that anybody can see. And if you go apply for a job, especially a job that requires fiduciary responsibility, you won't get that job because it'll show that you have a, a delinquent tax, property tax. That's what you're doing to people. You're lying to people about that. So you know what? I went ahead and called Hannah B. Jackson's office, talked to a guy named Brad, and I asked very simple questions. Hannah B. Jackson going to do anything about maybe trying to get the state to defer taxes? She goes, nope, she has no plans for doing anything like that at all. Hannah B. Jackson couldn't care less, and half you people, or more than half you people that are political allies, Hannah B. Jackson, you haven't done a damn thing. Now, getting back to the health issues involved here. Greg Hart, I see him on TV, he's some guy, some sort of health expert or something. Putting Greg Hart in charge of health issues, like I said previous, is like putting Typhoid Mary in charge of the healthcare system. Greg Hart deliberately and intentionally created slums, or helped create slums in the city of Santa Barbara, overcrowded disease slums, because he's a guy that believes in density. It is the worst thing you can do in, in a, to, to, for a situation like this. Dance communities create infectious problems. It spreads very easily. Look at New York City.
Mr. Becker, your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah, so is yours, Greg.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
Well, I, I appreciate that Mr. Becker has all of a sudden acknowledged the, the link between mortality and urban planning, and since, you know, 1.25 million people die worldwide in car accidents, that is largely a function of vehicle miles traveled. I, I hope he will give you just as much credit for the reduction of car accident deaths that has taken place from locating housing close to downtown. And I, for one, appreciate the leadership of our chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Williams, and thank you, Mr. Becker, for being engaged as always. Is there any other questions? Supervisor Hartman?
I just wanted to add that this has been, you know, these daily press conferences are an amazing thing to be available to our community, but it is a major effort. And for our CEO and for our department head for public health and for our chair, I really appreciate what you're doing on behalf of all of us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. There are an enormous number of people who are working for the county every day, seven days a week, 12, 16-hour days without a break, and they are completely committed to protecting the health and safety of our residents and doing everything that they possibly can. It isn't possible to do everything, but they are doing a fabulous job, being smart and strategic and thoughtful and collaborative. And I think the collaboration is probably the most important thing. It is, it is time-consuming to collaborate. It takes patience and it takes persistence, and our staff is very skilled at that and is doing a really amazing job. All of the other community partners and public health at the Cottage Hospital and all of the hospitals throughout the county, all the medical clinics, all the medical personnel that are putting themselves in harm's way to treat the patients that are coming to their facilities and to prepare for what we all know will be an upcoming surge. The most important thing everybody can do themselves is to practice the very simple social distancing steps. It is not complicated, it is, but it is proven, and, and from what I was reading earlier this morning, there is data that is emerging from other communities around the country that it is becoming effective. It is not clear and certain and demonstrable data, but we don't have clear, certain, demonstrable data in this moment. We have the data we have, and there is good evidence that the efforts that all members of the public are, are committed to doing, which is staying away from each other, staying home, if you are sick, staying home, and calling your medical provider if your symptoms become advanced to a degree that you think is of concern. Your medical provider through the phone will tell you what to do next, and you should be washing your hands religiously and regularly and cleaning and disinfecting surfaces. So those simple things are incredibly powerful and effective if we all do them together, and I think our community is doing a fabulous job of that so far. So is there any other element of this?
Chair Hart?
Yes.
There was something that was brought up in public comment about Hardy Diagnostics and whether or not we, we are aware of that. I will tell you that I know that Dignity Health has met with, with Jay Hardy, and they are working on a solution there. So that is being taken care of, that loose end is tied up.
Thank you, Supervisor Lavigno. Any other comments on this item? All right. Do we need a motion? Yes, we'll have a motion to accept the report. Is Supervisor Williams?
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second?
And seconded. Any discussion and comment? Roll call, vote, please. Thank you.
Yes, Chair Hart and members of the board, just to clarify, that is, recommendations A through C do include CEQA from the maker of the motion. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Lavigno?
Aye.
Chair Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.